All good, all right. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield, Sumner, Salaway's Committee to Order for January seventh, twenty twenty-five at six oh two P M. And we do have a forum. You have Heather on line. I have a comment period. Any public comment? No. We all, all right. Approval of the October eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the October eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any changes of?
Here, there's on, no.
All right. So all those in favor, bye bye.
Jesse, hi.
Hi.
Right. Thank you, Heather. All right, solid waste budget and bank account update.
All right, so let's start with the budget. So at the end of December, as you can see, we're at fifty-six point one-three percent of the budget expended. Mattresses, as it states, we've got, we've received a hundred and four mattresses at the transfer station, which is an additional cost of twenty-six hundred dollars to the facility. Aside from that, I've also noticed, I'll use one specific example. Commercial disposal of other bulked ways, so when the prices went up from one twenty-five to one fifty-five, start watching a little bit closer and seeing what's being done. I believe the sheet that I sent you guys at your last meeting showed that like, construction and debris, supposed to be one trailer loaded in. With that, I mean, we're getting, we're getting loads of windshields dropped off from, from people who do windshields, like, there's nothing saying they can't do it, but this is all stuff that's, that's increasing our disposal costs, because if you go down to um, waste and recycling, we're sixty-four point one-five percent of the overall of the approved budget. Then that, that pays for tipping fees, disposable fees, hauling fees, so six months into the year, we're sixty-four percent. Phone, phone fax and internet, obviously that's up, because as you all know, I had it installed and had for the cameras, so we're paying more there, so next year that'll be budget accordingly, but as I start working on writing this budget and looking at this, we really only want to, and that's increase the waste and recycling line, which will inevitably increase the budget. Because if you have no revenues coming in to offset that, then we've got to pay for it somehow, so. That's where we're at at the end of the first half of the year. Bank accounts currently sitting at hundred and fourteen thousand, two fifty-nine, that's before I deduct swap shop. Well, Don, they're on, they've been doing some work, they purchased the doors and other things, so I'll need to back that out of that seventeen hundred dollars that's in there for them. Um, and then I also updated the disposal fees, the the most recent information that I have, so I know there's, there was, there's been some confusion on where the heck we were, so. Tires especially, we don't take those to main, main ways, because those go to B D S tire, tire recycling in Jared Field, and we paid two hundred and sixty dollars, uh, all at twenty-six dollars for fuel surcharge and a hundred and sixty-five dollars a ton. Last I checked, that hasn't changed. But she rock shingles are gone up, mattresses obviously, oversized multi-waste, we're not. And then our regular, I don't know why it says municipal solid waste, it means mainstream waste, but um, that's going to go forty-eight dollars next year. And it's going to go up a dollar every year. That's where we're at. Any questions?
And we don't make any differentiation for um commercial users versus.
We really don't have a way to do it. I mean, I read through the minutes, because obviously I wasn't at the last meeting. And I mean, aside from having someone that specifically sits there and monitors loads and, and checks stickers and does all that throughout the day, I, which is an added expense of, you know, two days a week times eighteen hours, or eighteen hours a week, that's whatever we pay that per se. So I mean.
Thank you. Yep.
I don't have the answer.
Great. And obviously, the folks that work there have little time to chasing that.
Well, Bill really should be getting out of the, out of the the compactor office anyways, and Stanley can't monitor the stickers on fifty vehicles on Saturday.
Right.
Cameras are okay, but who's going to sit there and watch the cameras? Saturday's my day off. So I know, I mean, that'd be issue the stickers, Summers tracking it, Buckfield's tracking it. It's not a perfect science, but. That's scratchy.
And I know we've talked a bit about the cost for tires as well, are we? Is that cost still costing us an exorbitant amount? Do we feel?
No, I, I stand, I stand by what I said at that very first meeting, because we're not taking them to main ways, getting that feet per tire. The one sixty-five has been pretty much across the board as long as we've been taking it there, and I think last year our entire tire disposal was like ten thousand dollars, so you're talking less than ten percent of the budget. The majority of our costs are coming from the other bulked ease. They've been next to the, the copper right here, sure. I mean, obviously she rocking shingles, but we really don't get a lot of that, maybe three to four families that get dumped a year. Tires maybe once a month. I, I don't see a tire problem. I see an O B W probably. But I mean, just getting, getting rid of brush, I mean, that's up to one hundred and eighty-five, I think we were paying one fifty-five last year. So that amount thirty dollars. Good news is we don't have to pay somebody to take it, it's just the homeless.
Yes. Any other questions on the budget? Closer to budget season, we'll get an idea where that's going to land.
I'm working, I'm working through it now, so you can let Diane know that I'll have some sort of bulletproof soon, probably before, uh, February.
All right. Swap shop, shop, discussion and follow-up. I see Azalea worked up a trap policy.
Well, and this is, this is for the, the transfer station itself, not so much the swap shop, so you can address that now or after. Um, as far as the swap shop goes, I personally had some time to talk to Dawn about um the issues there, um, I'd love for Dawn to share his opinion if he's willing, um, but I think that we're headed in a better direction.
George, no, you might do have problems, so. On some of the things we said at the last meeting, those paintings are on how um coastal comments made about donations, uh, refusing donations. And that didn't happen, that would be coastline. Uh, and it was a tent, you know, the large tent. Called man tent, uh. And I asked the person why he was getting rid of it, and he said, because it leaks like crazy. And, and he didn't have a fly for it. It was also very live, we know where it's put. The weather conditions weren't the best, um. Um, and I guess he did have other empty equipment. I said to him, why don't you call a church? Uh, or the voice of, uh, group. And he said, I don't want to do that, he says, I wish it charged at all. You know, we have problems, we have things that we can accept there, and it happens a lot. And some people get hurt by it, you know, they, 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 they think they're really doing the thing. Um, and we just can't take it from them, I'm learning what's first phase, so. Um, and a large size, we need, we invite people to decorate a couch. So look at the weather, whatever, you know, look at the weather, we can teach them a few days. Um, but how should you, even if you cover it, it's not the same a week later. And the same with the plastic wood furniture. Um, plastic wood furniture will weigh a hundred pounds, and rain wants to raise strain around, and it falls apart, so you can touch it. So I wanted to touch on that, um. Um, this time around, this, uh, this summer, I'm not sure how much more trash should be, transfer station had or invests equipment to what we had here, enormous amount. Um, we've sold our bikes, so we've pushed it down, putting a stadium somewhere, uh, rather largest state cherry farmers, you know, to invite buildings or stuff. Um, and we did it with, uh, uh, short volunteers. We, we had seven, eight, four volunteers, we lost seven when, when the change over came. Um, and we just now, in September, we started getting more volunteers, but um, we're up to thirteen, some of them are part-time, so. I hope I, um. I, I stick up for my volunteers, they're doing a great job. Uh, there's a few there that actually work both Saturday, Wednesday and Saturday, uh, they have since, uh, since they're doing anybody. Really like to mention Laurie Swine, and and Gloria Javon, just, um, did a fantastic job. Of course. Uh, other issues are mentioned with that. Complaints, we do hear a few complaints, we don't have that many. Uh, we have a Facebook page, it's up to five hundred and seventy people, uh, which people can't decide. Uh, but I don't I don't remember, I think one, and it was a person who uh, I showed Dawn, said that terribly the volunteers and the swap shop are stealing. We, we raised that, and we banned person, after looking at his site, that's what he does for a living. He was complaining, so. The Facebook page, I gave a lot of attention, uh. Uh, to you. So, over there. Uh, forget that I'm lying first. Uh, you know, we have, uh, uh, we're leaving the line, and we have a house, you don't have to bring anything, you can actually, you know, sort of share it up, and you can make connections. Um, to actually do a little grant in the swap shop. Um, and then people can actually put things up there, you know, what she did, uh, wonderful job, uh, she's, uh, who decided to leave this, and I wish she wouldn't, but, uh, uh, it's up to her. Um, but the complaints we get all the time, I'm sure. It was said at that, there was a whole bunch of complaints coming through this office. Uh, and I stick up for the secretary each time. Uh, I haven't heard that. I haven't heard a complaint at all, personally. Um, I mean, I, I have in the shop, people say something about the shop or whatever, you know, they're just getting minded things, um. Some kind of myth-like, uh, uh, complaints are there. We had, uh, we had a few people. Um, there were, one, one lady who actually shot off and threw her names um, because of her actions, um. I think it was said, uh, swap shop was an embarrassment. Because we had a post there. And, uh, and the police were there to remove somebody who was outrageously acting. Um, and it wasn't a swap shop person that called. It was actually, um, that's the method, had the, uh, who had the, uh, swap shop, the ones who were concerned, the one called off. The duck's still walking, they have a water, the dog. The, the dog. Better. Oh, and the dog, the dog was actually not a big word, too. The dog, uh, um, somebody got a dog in, somebody missed both, one of the logages, and, and she couldn't have dogs in. Um, there was actually no rule about dogs in. Uh, and she should have said what she said, but it became an issue, I think with Sandra, uh, I think somebody went to her and complained. Uh, it wasn't worth the time. The dog issue is still in, and, uh, we don't have a policy on the dog issue after the transfer station. Uh, and I told the, uh, annual control officer. Uh, he told me, uh, that if that's a therapy dog, which personally claims to this, uh, then that dog is can be there, it's why it's losing sign. Um, and I'm not sure that this committee can actually put a policy against that. I mean, I'd like some direction on that, on what, what we're doing in that case. Um, so, um, committee has some direction, so it's uh, at this point in time, the dog still comes, if, if it comes to the side for that, out on the side of the lot, so. Uh, I don't know where you want to go with that. Um, traffic. Child, the community, it's project, man.
Yeah, like Saturday, she's going, it's, it's not always right there. We're done, Saturday, she's.
Sorry, we, we can't have speaking between attendants right now, we're listening to Dawn, we'll, we'll get to you, miss, sorry.
Uh, swap shop, the vastest new product. Uh, basically that shop was eight. Which I find that is kind of ironic, uh, for safety reasons. When we set up a fast debate, does that mean we can fill eight people? You know, why is it eight? Uh, what needs to be done was being done, so doors, emergency doors being brought. One's in, we gotta be putting the other one in, shut up. Um, and it'll work kind of double-fold, so it actually allows us to take the tables out on the side of the shop, uh, which improves the packing. Um, and keeps them out of the push pile. Um, but it's also a good place for us to store our tables, low-risk area, I'm hoping. Uh, so doors are going in, uh, but I recently put in and so it's, uh, right along the side of the building. Uh, I mean, uh, I'm still questioning whether it's fashioned to interfere with, uh, because that'll lose its fame a lot. With the capacity, uh, uh, we do deal with it, if there's three people in there. But it happens fast, one sudden, you know, the place is full. Volunteers are doing what they're there for, I've sworn two thousand, I don't know. Um, we do at times, I have to say, you know, uh, anyway, it's been in there half an hour, please give somebody else a chance. Um, and that can be kind of conducive to a mother who's in there looking for clothes for her, for kids, getting from the past, we plan to. Uh, so another song, we don't know what's on. I'm just ready to go. Um, well, we're looking at the future of the shop. Uh, we just added, uh, we're adding another heater, they won't go bad. Uh, we're adding another heater because, uh, type of place, it's not, not trading up the thermostat. It's, it's whatever the temperature is outside, but the temperature is in there. Uh, so we're gonna add one more heater. With that, we've kind of improved the safety. There's a small heating on the floor where somebody can put bags or something on them, uh, so the fire away. Um, safety in there, there's, there's nothing that burns in that, or blows up them, there's no flameable, so there's some um, and emergency doors in there. Three, good situation, situation is sure to take care of.
Yeah.
On time, yes. Uh, oh, and the other thing was who mentions on liability uh, of the tops, um, I've been doing some researches with uh, a nonprofit, how they would go about it. A, a lot of the work is actually done because you your guidelines are there, you know, the commission statements are in there. Um, I did talk to, uh, Glenn Holmes. Uh, it seems eventually, you know, uh, I and he said, there's a scrimmage between the two town. Uh, some of the ones, swap shop and Buckville on the plaza. So. But, uh, one of the things that he says, uh, uh, if you want to do a nonprofit, that the town lease to the nonprofit. Um, which is a good idea, but I'm sure there's there's many things that have to be looked at before you decide. But I would like the commission to go on with that. Uh, if I had a board director, so. Um, to, to set us in that area, because I think that, so I do a few of those, um, there's more than they need, so. With that, I'm, I'm.
Thank you for sharing, Don. What do we think? I personally am of the mind that I think it's smart that they explore, um, developing a nonprofit for the swap shop. And we, you know, lease the space to them for a nominal fee. Um, but that's my personal opinion, I'd love to hear yours.
It was fast, and all approached us. Um, you know, are we thinking, we have quite a lag already there, and are we thinking about reg skating, canyon?
Yeah.
And taxes, and it'll improve their program, and there is recycle and government programs. Uh, it would help us, but I'm pretty sure so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm all for it. I'm a favorite, yeah.
Great, so yeah, if you could explore that possibility, and I'll reach out before our next meeting, and your family helps us, don't worry.
You know, another thing, we, we don't donations are, are they tricking? We had a day when there was nine to ten people in there, we had seventy-four dollars in the day. We had a hundred people and they were four dollars. It goes up and down, but, you know, one of the things is that I did uh, maybe a, a two-dollar charge for very first. So. But we need, we don't need a whole online. But we need to keep up priority. The roof on, on the chian is there, uh, rusting pretty bad, and probably should be treated next summer. Um, um, she needs a roof over the jump. Uh, and the reason for the two doors is those, those don't line up back to back. When the ten inch face, uh, treatment, we clean it. So it's kind of obvious. Two things I can do. Um, fix with my son. Okay. So let's go into the thing.
Thank you, Don. Do we have any further comments from?
I can have, I just said, you know, like, on Saturday, the dog was there, and I'm not interested, the dog during the ice camp, but you got like got a little bit closer than going out. How are you going, how are you gonna go to one side to see if the dog's there, uh, you know, you're not gonna trip over her. But yet I get it, if the lights go out, we can't go in there. But if the dog's in there, you got all these clothes, isn't that a factor of falling or something? For safety rules?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, something to consider.
And Lee has agreed to keep the dog tied.
Okay, but having it tied up, and when you're not there, but yet you still let the dog in, that's still going against rules. There's only a rule against the dog.
Yeah, we, unfortunately, there is no policy that says anything about animals at the transfer station, which we can get to with my draft, um, but is something that I think is worth exploring, because they can be a bit of a liability, especially in such an industrial setting, um, I've, you know, I see your concern, absolutely. And I share that concern, so, thank you for sharing.
Yeah. In the rules, with the swap shop, my biggest concern is that it's free for one, so why is all the commotion, why is all the the stuff going on, it's free, and then like, on one shift, you might say, oh, well, no, we can't take that because we want to share it. So there's no limit on taking anything out of the swap shop. But yet, everybody's telling them, no, you can't place this, you can't take that, you need to put it back, and be kind to others. Is that what the swap shop's about?
Are you saying that like, the volunteers are preventing people from taking like an excess of something?
I mean, if you're on a night shift Saturday, but that in the afternoon, you want to take the swap shop, go ahead, because you leave the waste station, leave the bench, and leave a couple, just four things, and you can have all the clothes and everything in there, so that way we can get new stuff in there.
Yeah.
But we need to make it clear that it's for comfort, sir. And if somebody wants to take it, I'll take it. But that's where I'm a little confused at. Because I don't know if you can, if they can take it, or if we should say something, and then how do the people don't even want to come back to the swap shops or done with it?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's not my goal, my goal is to bring more people in, to get more things out, so we can bring more than any then.
Correct, yeah, I'm sorry.
There's always a big concern of who to take what and how much. Uh, and there's times when it bothers the heck out of me that somebody committed will take everything. We did an instance in there where somebody brought in almost five hundred, uh, canning jars. And I put on, on a webpage that, that I bought, I think I'm maybe seven or a little bit, and I bought, uh, um, we, we were being dealing with the the bottles, the lady showed up like seven thirty, and she said, I want to take all of them, I said, no. Why not? And it's nine o'clock, and we open, we figure away, there's seven people there, and then a clock, we're gonna canning jars, which is one there, somebody looking in for us, amazing. Probably they would rule the most of. Trust me, but, uh, at seven o'clock, it was seven, uh, nine o'clock, and seven people. And I said, okay, everybody take six. And I will go from there, and we actually go right to the cross, so everybody got a fair share. But that can't be done all the time, um. I, I, I don't see the, um, saying you can't take this, you can't take that, I know it's happened. So, but this there's so vague rules on how we control that, we, we, as she just said, we want stuff to pass through this, that's what we do, but.
I, I think over a year ago, when this came up, in the discussion, what was happening is there were concerns that a particular individual was constantly just loading their car to the gills and driving off with it, and it just really didn't give other people who might have been in the community the opportunity to become and look and see where, if there were things that they could use for their family, so that's kind of where that came from.
That's a concern, both, in both directions, it's a concern. You know, it's kind of hard to figure it out. But, you know, we do have, like, the one instance there, that there's a, a lot of something, and, uh, maybe one person shouldn't get it all. I just kind of call for the people running the shop, that's it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would think, too, is, I mean, it's, it's hard for us to set policies when we're not there, right? Okay, we would look to you guys for guidance to say, we, we should really develop a policy around this, so that you have something to operate off of, we've agreed to it, and you know, but that, that makes it more consistent.
That's hard to do, too, because we're all individuals, and, you know, what's, uh, Venice, it's Saturday day in the afternoon, so we're, we're, at least outside. He keeps things different than I do, and that's fine, unless we need um, you need that, uh, I did want to say that we did have a play up the alley, I meant. And it was in gorgeous shape. Um, the guy says, will you take this? And I said, I don't think I can, and the lady pulled up and was asked, she says, that coming in here? And they backed trucks up, and just off it went. But, uh, he said, I have sixty random rolls to the machine, uh, those have to be two bucks a wax, so. Uh, and donations, you know, I mentioned that maybe given one, two rolls of bags, something like that. Uh, if you put two rolls with the clothes in the bag, in shopping bag, you're getting a pretty good buy. Um, so things like that, we need to more, all of that to maybe, you know, if I had a place to keep that, I'd go and put it on my own.
Yeah.
Watch out for them. We had a Schwinn bike, they had nineteen fifty vintage. It still had a tag on it, and still had the little logs on the tire, and the lady asked if she could have that. So for what? Exactly. That's what I did, she said, I'll bring something back, and she says, how much was one of those, I said, I'll do that, just off my color. My physical is a shame. So, so we have the gloves, mine is, and all. Uh, I'm, I'm told of my, it's that building. Uh, there's going to need some paint, like I said, the roof is going to have to be, uh, either built over with a seal. Kind of something that one of us know. It's, it's when we put the door in, we get it. So the building doesn't sit square, so you got to put a fence, so. But this looks square.
Yeah.
Doors, that's not. But it's, it's an adventure every day.
Yeah.
Sounds like. Any additional comment on the swap shop before we wrap up?
Hi, it's Gloria Javi, who worked at the swap shop. I think I've been there, oh, two years maybe, and get, give a try again, right? And I enjoy working there, and stuff. And, um, but I had this problem, cannot put out a few months' hours. And, um, I was told I couldn't take any baby clothes and stuff because I love to help people out, and I usually check, I see who needs help and move on. And I go out of my way to try and help them out, and why she called. So this one lady down in Auburn was pregnant, and she needed baby clothes, and, you know, one day at the swap shop, some real good babies came in. And I made a comment that I'd like to have it. You know, and I was told it wouldn't happen. And I made a comment that I'd like to have it, you know, and I was told it wouldn't happen. And that really brought me down, you know, yeah, honestly. So like, you know, we could take, no. And so I didn't argue about it, and I just walked off, and on the other end of the swap shop, mine in my own mouth. This is in my mouth, but I knew if I got started, it was gonna be over. And um I always make sure I put in a good, good donation every month. I think Don can back me up on that, and I always show him the donation that I'm gonna be putting in. Cause I'm not gonna have anybody saying, well, Lori was not putting in her share and everything. Well, I do, I do have my way to be honest and everything. And so I called Don up one day, told him I was done. And he wanted to know why, and I explained it out to him. And so he said, maybe I can get an opening in the afternoon, so that's why I changed from the morning to the day after noon. And as far as I'm concerned, everything's been going good. And I like it, I need to go over it, and I'm gonna keep on helping people out. Whether this one grows or likes it or not, I don't care, I wanna do it.
We really appreciate that, I can say, thank you. I appreciate you sharing. Definitely something that could be addressed, and I think I'll have continuing conversation with John on. What what policies are working, which might need to be tweaked? But I think for, do we have any further couple comment on the swap shop?
I'm just like, yes, yes, we can all step girl down there, be happy, she will, you know, joyful. If you do that, I've heard over the years that many people will come see you because you're that jet person. Too happy, you're you're glowing, and any young teens that are just wanna sit back and have that. I believe they saw that they need to rearrange their pace. I'm gonna say it. And if everybody was on board, then maybe we could get that swap shop going so bad. That they'd clean us out, and we'd be happy, and we'd get those stuff in. You know, that would be a goal. And I think if we were all on board with that, I think it's a good answer. And I could say you're on board and not be with it, that shows me. We need to say one thing and do another, why did say?
I wish I knew, totally understandable though, thank you for sharing.
Um I have a question, Don, um. So when the policy on fourteen, section F. Says all decisions on materials that can be accepted will be made by the volunteers at quarterly meetings. Volunteers will know what I move into the system best and what the shop can handle. Are you having those quarterly meetings, or is that something that needs to take?
We've had we've had once before, but we're we're just gonna. Uh may or may actually, I was gonna ask here, we actually use them for the. We had one and um um I'm not sure, can't get up, I didn't buy pizza for the for the meeting. But uh it was a good meeting, we both attended. Um and we talked about like equipment to order and and moving. The tables are around the side, I I definitely applaud Cam and Stan and the family. Buckfield crew, uh for women that are spot on, that's what we can actually do that. We can keep off the off the road, have more fun. But we we do have maybe another one coming up.
Okay, so I mean, I would just encourage your volunteers to all be there and and you guys can hash that out, I mean, it's part of your.
Yep.
Part of the swap shop.
And the reason we're putting in this is exactly that.
Yeah. Know that we're everybody's data, their concerns and. And then maybe who else needs to have flights?
For a fool like this, so basically.
All right, well, when you get a meeting date figured out, um I think there is a form that they have to fill out to use municipal spaces now. Quick and easy thing, um and as a municipal sort of thing, you won't, you know, there's no charge for it or anything. It's like should be an email or a message and let me know when that is, and I'll try to show it too.
We didn't laugh, so probably not gonna do that couple days. I just got a tough go around there in the morning. If the time clocks didn't work, uh the by the time you go home is well enough to stand. Right, and that's why we had the third heater, probably put in by the time the tweet. Then the older one, the heck, and and actually people said, we're not gonna do anything. Which I don't want.
Um so I was asked to attend, even though I have recently left swap shop. Because things have been summarized generously tonight. That there's some concerns from some of the volunteers and was one of the reasons that I felt. Uh that there's inconsistencies and rules not being followed through with, and the guidelines not being followed. And there's a lot of frustration among the volunteers individually, they each have their own separate complaints that they're concerned. Um there's several people that have spoken, um spoken out, and it's not been addressed. There's been incidences that weren't handled. Um and I'll tell part of that, I can attest to some of those persons. But these ladies I know have some specific things that they were hoping to speak about, but it's hard to get it out. So there's there's some concerns outside of the local committee that came in last year.
If you, and I totally understand, like not wanting to like hash everything out on a public forum, like my email inbox is always open. If you guys want to compile those ideas and issues into an email, and she's on my way, like I will do my best to address them. For you guys, my, just one of my quick off the top questions would be. When you consult the swap shop guidelines, do you feel the rules are too vague? Or do you feel that people are explicitly not following these rules for their personal interest? Thank you for sharing. Any further questions, comments? Thank you all for sharing.
Did you want to go over this, or?
Yeah, I'll I'll go over this real. Go over this real quick, this is like so kind of half baked, so I wasn't looking to take any action on it tonight. I just wanted to pass it out to everyone, this is just my draft of some sort of misconduct policy we talked about. Addressing that, you know, our attendants are kind of getting harassed by, hopefully not too many individuals, but it certainly happens. And it would be helpful for them to have something that they can turn to and point at, say, we can't accept this kind of behavior. Um so these were just some of my ideas. Um I did italicize the uh the websites, just as kind of a question mark. Um I did notice that at least our transfer station page is a little outdated, I don't know how often you guys update a website. So we could just have it so that um uh they can uh find the information by contacting the town offices directly. But I do think it's for ease of access, it might be good to have, once we finish this policy, it be available on both websites. But yeah, if you guys, I don't know, if you've had a chance to give it a look over, I sent it like right before the meeting, so I don't expect you to have looked at it thoroughly.
I read it quick when I got here.
Yeah, yeah, so if you guys, you have my email, like just give it a look over, you know, if you, you know, see anything you don't like. Like something you feel is missing, and we can hopefully take action on this at the next meeting.
Thank you very much for putting that together.
I'm happy to.
All right, is there anything else? Guess the only thing I didn't put on there was schedule your next meeting. Oh yeah, just thought of that, and she said that, so. How you do these quarterly?
I feel like that's how it's kind of been shaking out lately, I never only found it, they went twice yearly.
Twice a year, but it seems like it's.
Yeah, they like quarterly.
Yeah, how do you guys feel, would you like to do about six months, or? Just meet up in three, maybe around like April, right?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I'm good.
Okay, and then the next one would be at your town meeting, so if we're looking at April, you guys do the second.
Second. Yeah.
Okay, so it would be either, um, let's see, April eighth or April twenty second. Any preference there? And we can revisit, it'd be an email if something is, something does conflict with that too, but.
But shoot for the twenty second, it's need to adjust it, but what's better, me to just, it's Earth Day.
No, there isn't, there's no wife's birthday, he's on the eights.
That sounds like a good reason to skip it. So I'll make a motion that we schedule our next meeting, what time do you guys do your meetings?
Six.
Six, uh I make a motion that we schedule our next solid waste committee meeting for five thirty on April the twenty second. In Sumner.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Earth Day it is. There's no other discussion? I'll make a motion, we adjourn at six forty-three P M. All in favor? All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, have a great night.
Yeah, sorry for not setting the policy earlier, I thought that our meeting was the two weeks from now, and I shut it already down. I saw the email this weekend and a little panicked right then. Yes, let me know what you guys think on all that.
Just just in all this, actually, it's kind of well, we have, just like I talked to Joe for select meeting tonight.
Oh, I got you, yeah, I'll take it. If you wanna take like a. Five minute break, a minute break, a couple minute. Judy, we'll be right back, we're just gonna take a couple minutes, get everything set up. Just gonna pause. Can you hear us, Judy? Alright, we're good to go. Good, alright. Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting of the Buckfield Select Board to order for January seventh, twenty twenty-four. At six fifty-four P M, no, six forty-eight, nine point M, nine P M. We're a little late because we just did the solid waste committee meeting. We do have a forum here tonight, forum, sorry. Uh, old business, fire rescue department P O V use policy. I know there were some amendments, yes.
Just a good question. Would it be possible to push whole business?
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely. We don't need to vote on that. Everybody's okay with us moving ahead. I already got it. Alright. Uh, brush shop dam removal proposal from Trout Unlimited. Proposal discussion?
Thank you. My name is Gene McKenna. We have, we have a bit of a crowd, but they're all important people, so I just wanted to introduce everybody. Uh, I'm the conservation chair for the Mariner Navy Bay chapter. I've been in trial limited since nineteen seventy-two, if you can believe that. Uh, Jeff Bush is our immediate past president. He's on the conservation committee with us. Berg Lee from the Thank you. Ben Hammond, Holmes, number nineteen, on the other side of the river, right at the dam.
Ethan Baker.
Ethan Baker, thank you. And, uh, Walden and his brother. I, uh, I just got a new hearing at the V A this morning. So it's still, I'm still trying to get used to it. But, uh, uh, we, uh, we, we, we sent camera sheet which outlined what we've been doing. Uh, we were referred to, to, to this project by Alex Allen, who we worked with to take out three dams in Freeport a couple of years ago that were abandoned, that nobody wanted. They were orphaned, much like, much like this dam, so. Uh, then we, uh, we're, our interest is fish passage. There were wild trout live in the, in both of the branches of the Inzenske. We've got a letter of, uh, support from Jim Telleran, the district wildlife biologist at I F W. And then we, we, uh, we talked to Ed Hammond and found out that his, his, uh, building is being is, is being slowly worn away by the, the links in the dam. Uh, last night, I was telling Jeff, last night I watched movie about Napoleon Bonaparte. He was in power when that dam was built. Ed would like to see the dam removed. Uh, we would like to see the dam removed. The state would like to see the dam removed for, from a fish passage point of view and from a public safety point of view. Uh, we, we, uh, had a professional engineer, David Hunter, look at the dam last week. And he's, he's of two opinions. One, that the same amount of water in a, in a big rainstorm, wind or snow, the same amount of water is gonna come down the river, uh, with or without the dam. Uh, the other thing is that the dam is ten feet high and it backs out the water. Obviously, some of the, some of the incentive behind the dam, but there's probably five feet of water that's backed up to the bridge. Uh, that's an impediment to big rainstorms, which, one of which flooded off the Pancha last winter. So it seems like the town would win if, if it goes. Uh, Ed, Ed would win, the fish would win. And, uh, all we need to do is come up with the money and the agreement from the town Buckfield. And a member of understanding. Uh, we also, uh, we had a nice chat with the historical society ladies. And, uh, we recognized that there's a lot of history there and one of the things I did when I got back from the V A in Thomas this morning, and I went to former site of the Edwards Dam on the Kennebec. And there's a big plaque that celebrates the history of the Edwards Dam, which was a big deal in, uh, in Agatha. So we proposed to build in a line item into the construction budget to put something like that to commemorate the three dams that were in Buckfield back in the day. There's still a, there's still a bridge abutment or a dam abutment down by the, by the bus yard. And the automobile building. So, uh, we would leave the wording and the pictures to the historical society, but we would fund it as part of the total project. And, uh, we can't get the money unless the town agrees to, to agree with us. So that's why we're here and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, who, uh, is much more erudite than I am. Give you some more information to convince you that this is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Jeff Bush, I'm the past president of the Mariner Navy Bay chapter. Uh, I don't know how much you know about Trout Unlimited, uh, so bear with me, nothing. So, uh, Trout Unlimited was formed back in the, uh, in the sixties, uh, Midwest. Uh, the simple idea that if you take care of the watershed, the fishing will take care of itself. And, uh, so that launched a, uh, uh, it is one of the oldest conservation organizations in, in the, uh, in, in America. There are, uh, chapters in most of the states, uh, and, and our mission is to protect and restore cold water fisheries. So we're not bass, we're not, we're not about bass, we're not about pike or something like that. Nothing against that, that's just not what we're doing. And, uh, uh, as a chapter, there are six chapters in name, we, and our chapter extends up to this area, goes from Freeport to, to Miss Castle on the coast, comes up to Leeds west of here. And, uh, and, and, and northward. We have been growing our abilities to, uh, to do conservation projects. If you can imagine chapters have their weak points, chapters have their strong points. And we've been building our chapter for the past five, five or six years now. And, uh, and now are actively pursuing conservation projects. We got our toes wet with the, uh, with the, the Frostgully Brook project in Freeport. That Jane referred to, there were three obsolete dams there. Two were hard by two ninety-five, um, and one on, um, on Route One. And all the property owners engaged with that, uh, wanted the dams to come down. One was owned by the Freeport Water Company. And the other two were owned by, uh, Alantros. Uh, the, the permitting process is exhausted. And it becomes a long game. Because you can go ahead and, and put your permit into the Army Corps of Engineers, NOAA, the N D E P, other, other bodies. And then they take their good old sweet time. They should make the permit. It's just a fact of life. So one of the things that I would like to put across here tonight is that dam's not coming down next year. Okay? Uh, this could be, as I said, a long process. But that's what it is. And so, uh, it took with all the parties now, there was a COVID interruption. Uh, work had to stop. But with all the product, all the, all the people, uh, engaged to, uh, want the dam to come down, it still took about eight years to get all the permitting done. Now, I'm not saying it's gonna take eight years to do this. Alright, your, your livelihood may vary. But once it's done, it took three days to take those three dams out. Back. And I can't tell you the turnaround from the environmental point of view. It's, it's just been incredible. So this was a, a urban and parish stream, it was a, uh, it, you know, in full promise when it comes down to the ground, but then, you know, it's, it's, uh, just there's an onslaught of pollution from cars, people's laws, uh, and so forth. And, uh, we, the, 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 the way streams are graded has to do with how well they support macro birders. We've seen a tremendous rebound in Frostgully Brook with, uh, with macro birders. Um, it's also a, uh, uh, a sea run broke, uh, if you're familiar with that. So, so brook trout are like the freshwater fish. Maine has the last bastion of, of native, uh, brook trout in the, in the country. This is, this is, so this is why we're so passionate about it, because when, when those native brook trout go, they're gone. So that's why we need to, we need a way to protect this. That's what's driving us. I lost my thought. Where I was going with that. But, um, we have seen a, a tremendous, uh, rebound of, uh, of dams will fly up nests and, uh, caddies nests and, uh, mayfly nests. Caddies you kind of expect to see, caddies can live in, in degraded, degraded streams pretty well, but the mayfly is like the greatest canary in the coal mine you could find. If you got, if you got a, a thriving, uh, mayfly population, you're, you're, you've done really good work. So the dams come down and then well, so the entire ecosystem rebounds. But it's, the entire ecosystem now is changed and there's bare earth on the ground. So the other thing that we're, we've been doing, the extent is in monitoring for, well, first of all, getting rid of the invasive plants, which is a multi-year project. Um, you have to pour poison into them, cut them down, poison them, and then wait for them to die at the root level and then you take them out. But then there's a replanting that also happens. Native plants. So, um, I would like to, uh, also put forth the expectation that when the dam comes down, the landscape is, is going to change, but it's not good, we're not gonna turn our backs on it because Jane took a dam down. So it's, it's a, it's a stewardship, uh, proposition. Another project we have going on right now is in the town of Brunswick. So there is a five mile stream that begins and ends right from the town of Brunswick. Comes out of the ground, much the same way the Frostgully comes out of the ground, out of this beautiful sand and gravel. And like Frostgully, no sooner comes out of the ground on onslaught with, uh, uh, and it's also with an urban and parish stream. Down in Brunswick, uh, commissioned some years ago now, say, for the sake of this conversation, ten years ago. They watershed natural plan uh, for, uh, for Mary Brooker. They're required to do that by law because while this Mary Brooker is a, a class B stream, it is, it is it's not meeting its, uh, designation, it's not meeting the criteria for a class B stream. In other words, it cannot support the insect life, it should, it should be able to support it. So we're working with the town to, uh, uh, get them money to, uh, enlarge, you know, put in large culverts in, uh, repitch the culverts. Uh, we've, uh, we've, uh, worked with, uh, uh, the Col, uh, uh, Bowden College and, uh, and the U S Navy will also have parcels funded on land. To, uh, clear some of these culverts of, uh, rebar grain, which do nothing but collect garbage and stuff for the water. And we're also putting together an outreach and education program, uh, for that. Uh, for, for the streams of, uh, the waters particularly and everybody within the watershed. First of all, I understand that they live in a watershed. I, uh, I've, I've had conversations with people and they say, oh, auction. So there's a, uh, there's, there's a general uh, ignorance, uh, about, I don't know, I don't, I don't want to use the word pejoratively, but these people just don't understand how their actions how the, um, the oil dripping from their oil pan in their driveway is not, it's gonna stay in the driveway, it's going to go off. So this is part of the outreach. Um, getting people to be a little more careful about their pesticides, fertilizer use, um, washing their cars, things of that nature. So, that's pretty much what we're, what we're about. Uh, there's just one more thing I wanna, I wanna, I wanna add to that. Um, as you know, Long Island Stock, and there are several dams on the way to Mariner Navy Bay. And, uh, uh, each one of these dams has to be licensed, a license lasts for like thirty years. The dam in Brunswick is up for its lessons renewal. The dam was built in the eighties and, uh, it's gonna be renewed in about five years. And it takes about five years to get everything done. And, uh, but one of the things that, uh, is, is problematic about that dam is the way that the fish ladder is complete. Uh, there's a fish ladder remaining on it. So we are, uh, we're pressuring, uh, for, we're pressuring Buckfield. Uh, we formed a coalition with, uh, Maine Rivers and American Rivers. Uh, we're working with the town of Brunswick so they can, you know, so they, they can put a statement together. We're working with the town, we will be working with the town of Topsland across the river, so they can put, uh, uh, a, uh, a statement together as well. So we're building a coalition and that's the, that's how I wanna end my remarks here. We don't do this work alone. We do this work in partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. We, wanna hear additional comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, uh, I was just the watershed council actually have been involved with, uh, but or, cause we were involved with bridge. We wanted to change the culvert to make it and to improve fish passage there. And while we're working on that, we're shut. But we're spending more money into it than So, we, we remove, the watershed council has done several small dams, not nothing, uh, as big as this one, but, uh, you know, I don't really see any problems, uh, taking this out as far as flooding or, um, changes in, any significant changes in the landscape really. Um, building is probably the most problematic thing. The, the downtown bridge actually restricts a little bit of flow. Um, and then the dam is a little narrower than the river somewhat because of the building. Um, so there's a restriction in the flow there when the dam comes up, I think the hydraulics will naturally
And as in honor of the building that's affected by this dam, would you mind speaking on more?
My name is Ed Hammond, uh, selectmen experts. I owned the building about thirty years when I came up from New Hampshire or Calhoun, as they call it. And I've seen a lot of changes on the bridge. Uh, I remember telling a funny story, I was at, I'm doing a week of walking my dog, and I thought some septic guys were unloading their truck. And it turned out that the fishing game, they said maybe you'll learn something. They dumped about, I think somewhere around five thousand brooks. And then they told me, they said, the problem is most of them will never make it above that dam. In fact, I think for a few. Cause I've never seen, you can pretty well judge, I think, how things work, like you say, the ecosystem and all that, by fishermen. And very few fishermen bought it, they blow up above the dam, cast a couple of times, especially the fly guys that are pretty good, I've noticed a couple of them come from further, they're expert fishermen. And they'll quickly go back down, it's a blue heron fish, it's a blue heron that will go fishing. And we have a pair that comes up every year. But the problem is the dam on my side is breaking apart and not to get into the history of it, because history, as he mentioned, does go back to the Napoleonic wars or whatever, just back to the foundation of the town. And at one time there were three dams, now there's one. But the problem is the dam, in my view, has turned from an asset back when they were trying to get revolutionary war soldiers to move here, Buck came here, Captain Buck formed the town, it was an asset that had performed power. Now it's a liability. Battles are ruined, damage, eco, uh, but there were new use and new use, I think everybody's used it tonight, problematic. And it is causing erosion on my side mainly because somebody had opened up the dam for the bridge to be reconstructed. They opened it up on my side and put metalwork in there for some kind of power generation that was part of the French passive backwards. And now that's starting to compel up. So I'm of course worried because I have seen, but I think you localized it and Bob here, my contractor, said you see indefinite sinkage. The building has it, but the original foundation was rock, granted, that dates back to when, how they built buildings two hundred seven years ago. And it's pretty steady, pretty sturdy. It can only take so much of the currents. They mentioned heavy currents and everything else caused the, the corrosion. Last few years, I've noticed from a good several thousand meters, maybe half a mile or more downstream, large maples, there, you know, hundred, hundred and twenty foot maples toppling on both sides of the river, and you can see the banks. I mean, it reminds me of a kid, some of the hurricanes down in Florida, my folks moved down from New Hampshire. You can see the banks with houses half toppling and everything else, severe erosion. And that's what we're seeing here. So I looked at, you know, from the liability aspect, and I do have mostly elderly people, I have one guy in my building, this, a Korean War veteran. And people need a place to live, and I, maybe I'm a little too affordable, my rent's kinda set at the bottom of the curb, but those people are happy, I'm happy with it, but of course, I'm very concerned about this and I, I thank God every night that fellows like these have come along, that have a solution to this. And I only can hope and pray that you folks are open to it too.
Thank you for sharing. And did you guys have any comment to make here?
Well, the only comment I had is, I can see it being a benefit not only to Ed and, and everybody upstream, you know, and we've all seen how so we've all seen now, uh, the campground, most of the brooks, campground up river has been flooded.
So we've all seen now uh the campground, most of us focus campground upriver and it's been flooded. Uh I think even lower than that. With five feet or four or five feet, they mentioned. These heavy rains who wouldn't who wouldn't have those problems. Uh I can see it more of a benefit to. To the town and everyone upstream as than than any anything else.
Thank you for sharing.
Could I add something to that? Uh David Huntress, the the engineer that we've been talking with. He he toured the bridge and he looked at the house of number two. Uh on the other side of the street, for example.
The bridge house.
Uh he wants to make sure with the DOT and the owner of that. That number two house. Because that foundation goes right down to 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 right alongside the river. So he wants to make sure that the bridge and that house foundation are solid to to withstand. Changes to the dam, so uh I I I was impressed by that because he wasn't just focusing on dams. He was looking on just down downhill, down.
So bridge house.
Downstream, if you will. And the other, the other thing. We're volunteers. Uh we we both have had the pleasure of fishing in Maine for a number of years. Uh it's been good therapy for me and uh. Uh I I I want to get back because of all the pleasure that the fish have given me. Uh I told a story earlier on that. If you lived in a house and somebody came along and built a cement wall between your bedroom and your kitchen. You might be upset. Well, the brook trout. They don't just stay in one hole on the river, they travel, they travel to breed. They have to eat spawning gravel to breed, they travel to eat, and they travel to get away from the hot temperatures in the in the in the summertime, which we. Really seeing more of and uh but way more uh way more severe storms, which. You know, they they have, they struggle to survive in in a big, big flood. So. Uh we're uh we're hoping that. You folks would agree that this is a good idea and give us a sense for your support. And which we really appreciate. And we thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight.
Thank you all for being here and sharing your experience with this work. It's really valuable.
Um as a landowner, I live. At the end of Fonzro, so when it floods, that's my one day off I get in a year, but. What can I expect to see in the makeup of the river? Level, flow, things like that.
It will, it will return to its natural state.
Well, I wasn't around that. Just want to know, what can I expect to see?
Uh here's what we can tell you firsthand. Uh. We we had volunteers from outside of our our charter limited chapter. Including a school teacher in Freeport. She wanted to learn about the about the bugs, the macroinverbers. So we went down and uh. We went to to the head ponds where the dams were. And we figured it would take years for all the silt to be washed away. The silt went in one year. The 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 meand, natural meander of the stream came back in one year. And Alex Abbott, who was. Is uh also an engineer, uh he started planting. Uh new shrubs and trees that will shade what used to be the the head pond behind the dams. To to return more to a natural state. So uh. All good things.
Oh, I I don't, I don't disagree with you. I just need to know, like in places it's thirty, forty feet across. You know, what's gonna happen? Is that gonna be now five feet across?
No, it's it it'd be a a minimal, a minimal uh change in the width of the stream.
So if you're looking down the stream below the dam.
I'm I'm above the dam.
I know, but if you go down to the uh. A snowboard of. The stream right there. It's a pretty natural stream, so you can expect something like that when the dam comes out. Upstream from where the dam is.
It loo- it looks like the head pond doesn't doesn't impede the river much further than than the road bridge. So that's where you're gonna see any shrinking and shrink shrinkage of the of the width of the string. From the road bridge down to to the dam side. So uh I don't think you'll see much of anything up on the Fonzro.
Uh do you remember, you go back to my earlier remarks about stewardship and and making sure that. Uh we if we if we come across invasives, we're taking them out. And as as the river or as the stream remains its natural flow, there's. There's going to be some air there where the water was lost. And that's where the planning comes in. Where you want to, you want to grow something that's going to be. High and 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 over overarch the uh the stream to help to keep the stream cold.
And that's one of the things that the charter limited has tackled in fact, they did it, did it at the at Frost Gully. We're we're advising the town of Brunswick on how to do it on Mary Brook. Which flows through the former Brunswick Naval Air Station. Three quarters of a mile under the runway. That you just had a big PFAS build and some of the papers down our way and uh. I I just heard that that all Ds have a sale on. Uh Sims waiters, which are like seven or eight hundred bucks a pair. The sun for two fifty, you know why? Because they have PFAS in them. And they're gonna start making them without the PFAS. Which was dumped onto the onto the runway in uh in Brunswick. So. The PFAS ends up in the bodies of the brook trout. And it has covered a thousand times the the limit set by the federal government. So uh. We uh. Some streams would benefit by trees. Being positioned in the stream to provide cover for the fish. Uh you have excellent cover here. It's all big boulders right right in this downtown stretch. There's a lot of gradient. And the gradient keeps the water oxygenated and cool. Uh up up further, there's some flatter water. Uh but maybe that's where some of the spawning habitat is, they need that clear gravel. So uh. We uh we're not. Cut and run people. If we, if you guys say, okay, remove the dam, we'll go out and work hard and raise the money. And then we'll get the dam done in short order. And then we'll be back to to reassess it. You know, what hap- what's hap- what's happened to the to the stream bed? And what can we do to? To stop, to plant something to stop the erosion on the banks. Uh there there are a number of. Uh ground covers that you can plant to to send the root system out into those those stream side uh gravel. You know, big boulders to hold the soil in place rather than get it washed away. So uh. Uh I, other than. Other than the uh the fact that it's a two hundred ninety year old dam uh. You know, that that has some histor- historical significance. Everything else is a plus. To to the trout, to the town, to to the property owners. Uh and I hope, I hope you can, I hope you can see it all.
And did you have an additional comment to make, sir?
Well, yeah, the um. Hydraulic, hydrologically, um. The dam still goes up to the bridge because it's ramped up above it. Uh and so run of the river, what they call run of the river dam, so everything that. Gets to the dam goes over it virtually immediately. Um. I don't think you'd see many impacts in uh environmental. Hy- hydrologic impacts downstream of the dam. Um so the stretch from the bridge. To the dam is is the one that's gonna. As they say, naturalize. There's a chance the stream is not. Actually natural anyways, but that's another story. Which can be filled in, what planes on it, all, you know, all kinds of things that happen on here. A building's been built, you know. You know, based on some some experience with this, I wouldn't anticipate personally any impacts above the rapids at the bridge. The um he mentioned Alex Abbott. Alex, I think, was the one that contacted you guys.
Yes.
Um so there's. Surveys, and we actually were involved with the Soul Conservator. Natural Resource Conservation Service in the district to do a survey of all the fishing predators. Um on the Little Andres Skog and the Zenska rivers, uh fifteen years ago, I guess. Um so that dam came up as a fishing pet of it, and Alex. Works on looking at those competitors over a period of time. And, you know, it came to his. Rigs up on his priority list to 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 take a look at it and um. You know, he he felt that removing it would be a benefit to both the hydrology and the and the. Fish fishing issues in the uh in the Zenska. So this. Dam. Not exactly sure what's between here and the Turner Dam. Um but there's effectively landlocked trout. Trapped, if you will, between those two, two dams. Um. So removing this dam gives those trout. An opportunity to migrate further upstream and get better cold water refuge. And essentially just uh. Increase the amount of habitat that's available for the trout in. Um in the the Zenska and the places like that at Brook and so on, yes. Removing the dam just opens up to have a watershed. It has twelve miles or something. Four miles, right?
Yeah.
Not two miles, not three miles.
Yeah.
Wow. And that's a lot of habitat for for a fish colony.
Yeah.
And that will, that will attract fishermen, you know, to to the community of. Everything I did, fishermen get hungry. The hydrology will be worked out. But that, that's a, you know, the quick and dirty answer is that it's not impacting a lot. From a archeology, archeology stand.
Alright, well this, it all makes a lot of sense to me. So what's, what's the process for us?
Believe that. The ask is, the ask is for a memo of understanding. Um if you'd like, we could put a draft together for that and you can, you guys can tailor that. Uh and then uh that's, that's always the first order of business because with that memo of understanding. Uh then we can go out and uh uh to, you know, to the grant providers. With our applications.
And that the first, you you guys can correct me if. The first step is to. Do some engineering, um. Probably preliminary in nature and then um apply for grants. That apply for, depending on how. Much preliminary engineering there is, uh depends on when you apply for a permit. And and when the agency wants it. I think um Donna, we just did. Tell them a local shoreline zoning permit. The DEP permit and um Army Corps. Three permits. And usually if DEP okay's it, it's a course.
We've approached some funders already. And uh the 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 cooperation of the town, the the support of the town is important to them. And uh uh everybody who's talked to likes, likes the proposal. Likes the fact that the dam is gonna come out from a from a fisheries proposal and and from a public safety proposal. Of a public safety point of view. Uh so uh that memo of memorandum of understanding, we can get a draft to you. Uh if you, you know, if the board agrees it's a good idea, then we can move forward to raise the money to to do it.
Well, I will make a motion that the town of Buckfield and Trout Unlimited draft up a memo of understanding for this dam project.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
So I?
Peter, right?
Another eye.
Thank you. There we go.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Camera, thanks very much.
Thanks for coming. So I'll take a load as well. I got two million dollars.
Awesome, thank you.
Nice to be there, thank you. Understood, Alan? Thank you very much, okay? Thank you. What's gonna happen after?
I'm sure I'm gonna get questions. Yes.
It was Cooper Dam and you had a giant reservoir behind it. It would be one thing.
Right, no, no, no.
This is.
And like I was telling. I I don't work on personal ones, let's see to just information if you can.
Yeah, we're we're gonna receive a lot of questions from people up and downstream, so it's definitely good to hash those out, but.
Let's have a meeting about.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell town meeting about that. Here's, here's, if you think it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Uh and here are the best practices. Here's how we're going to fight the trade. To get the risk and uh and I think here's what I would expect with the.
Yeah.
I asked Alex Abbott to be to conduct drive.
Sound pass.
So let's have that sound, but damn this season for his. His horsepower.
Thank you.
So David Huntress is an experienced guy. He was with Sister Chapter, taking the dam out in E D's fall. Over in Maple last year. Uh so uh he's a, he's a professional guy and uh. He's already, you know, earmarked the the bridge, the road bridge and that number two house as as. Areas of interest, so.
Yeah.
So we'll uh, God willing, we'll do a good job and uh. It'll be better.
On a personal note, this is gonna only be good for me, because you know, if it's gonna help in the road flooding or.
Yeah.
You know, fish habitat is just gonna benefit me, but I can't look at it as just a personal.
Yeah.
I I was on a finance committee in Bois Nans for twenty one years and uh. We worked with the select board, you know, quite a lot on the budget and went to a lot of meetings and, and they had to answer to the. To the town for the budget. And sometimes there weren't a lot of happy campers.
Safe travels.
Alright. Alright, uh, back up to old business, the fire rescue department, uh, personally owned vehicle use policy. Now, there were some amendments we were making on that. Suggested by our attorneys. So can you, yes, Kim.
I, I just noticed that two thousand twenty four, I meant two thousand twenty five.
Yes.
So the, the only, sorry, changing this is the high level portion. So we do have insurance coverage that would cover this, which is covered in this, um, but. It re- it restricts it to the, the rescue chiefs and deputy chiefs based on the authorized emergency vehicle aspect of.
Okay.
Now that we have policy and it clearly addresses all of this. If what has happened, it won't happen again.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the fire and rescue department personal. Uh, vehicle use policy as.
I have a second motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
Peter, right?
Heather.
Hi, sorry.
There we go. Alright. Boston Kane policy.
Right. I checked my email inbox and did not see any town feedback regarding the. Um, like, you know, time limits or anything, so. It's pretty much the same as you guys thought last time. I said, except for I settled on nominations. Must be received no later than sixty days from the date open nomination period is announced. Um, and then I uh, settled on the applicants must be at least eighty years of age. And must have resided in the town of Buckfield for the past ten years. Um, and then I also drafted up this. Little nomination application form. But yeah. Feel like she's ready to go and if we run into any other issues, we can just update as needed.
Yeah. Did we talk to the. Historical folks?
Shouldn't talk to them explicitly. I did leave it open.
Yeah.
I said that the town of Buckfield can decide to lease. Uh, the Boston Post Kane to a local historical organization for a nominal be, nominal fee if the select board so chooses, so. If the historical society is interested in, you know, presenting that. Um, I feel like probably that would happen after we open the nomination and application process, figure out who it is. Um, we did mention in here, I, I've mentioned in here. Having a plaque made, um, just to commemorate the people who wind up with the honor of the Boston Post Kane, so. Once we get all that stuff straightened out, then I feel like we can move on to where we wanna house the cane and that flag, whether it be. In the town hall or just upstairs at the historical society or maybe in the library. Depends on who's interested.
Yeah. Yeah, library, that's an interesting idea. Hope to see it.
Right.
Yeah.
See, nobody comes to town office.
I open so many hours a week.
Yeah. Always question that, get, try to get people to go. So do we need to vote on approval of that or?
Yes, is what I am looking for is the approval of the Boston Post Kane policy and the nomination slash application form.
So move. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Heather, I.
Peter, right?
Alright, thank you very much for putting that together. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Peter, right?
Thank you. And the total on that's three hundred forty three thousand, three hundred thirty eight dollars and eighty three cents. Rescue department monthly report. Business picked up a little.
Yeah, in December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they've had a total of forty calls for service during the month of December. Twenty four between six A and six P and sixteen of them were overnight. And the breakdown is there. Their total for their twenty twenty four was three hundred and eighty five calls.
And welcome Sarah, Jasmine and Jameson, uh, three new junior members to the department. Who have been participating in the academic internship throughout the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. And they've decided to stick around and join the apartment. We really appreciate that.
Yep, and they've been wonderful. I had a chance to look at them a little bit over there, so.
That's excellent.
Yeah, good folks.
And I believe we have a juvenile that's about to become an adult. Riley?
Riley.
Todd, I afraid.
Yes, yeah. Alright.
Also noted here, uh, Buckfield Rescue has created a community outreach program for residents. This is going to be a free service to anyone who would like their vitals checked or to have any medication questions answered. Um, as well as some other things as they come up. They'll be offering the service every Thursday from eleven thirty AM to three PM at the fire department. And they will also schedule home visits should you so request.
Thank you. I missed that.
No, no worries.
Yeah. Alright. Approval of the minutes from December seventeen, twenty twenty four, select board meeting. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I will second.
Any discussion? Anyone find anything in there? Nope. Alright, all those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Heather, I.
Peter, right?
Thank you. Um, approval appointments for Alyssa Phillips as town clerk and tax collector.
Should have put confirmation of the point. So I'm just looking for the boards.
Yes, I'll make a motion. Um, to appoint Alyssa Phillips as the uh. It's tax collector and. Town clerk.
Uh, second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Heather, I.
You're right.
And I'll make a motion, uh. To sign a certificate of settlement releasing Brittany Parrott from uh, recommitting taxes to Alyssa Phillips.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, bye bye.
So I.
Heather, I.
You're right.
Thank you. Another business. Would you have any other business? We covered a lot of business tonight, so.
We do.
Yeah, that damn thing was very interesting. Alright. Public comment period. Does anybody have any public comments?
Judy Stone cool.
Judy, alright, we were standing by. Alright, hearing none, um. I'll make a motion that we adjourn at seven forty one PM.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Yep. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.